Awesome. Good evening. This is the Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four joint meeting between JV Fletcher Library Board of Trustees and the Permanent Town Building Committee. Just a reminder to all attendees to this meeting that this meeting is being recorded, so all comments either spoken or provided in the chat will become part of the public record. First order of business is roll call. Buffy?
Yep. Claremont is not here. Dirks here. Fleckner?
Here.
Roach?
Here.
Ccore not here. Teal not here. Cook?
Yeah.
Isleton? Not here. Karpinski?
Here.
Mahana?
Here.
Patton?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Zegowitz?
Here.
And Wimberg?
Here.
Uh, let's see. So Berlinsky is not here either. Is that right, Ellen?
That's correct. Jeff Goodwin is here.
Yep, I'll get to him.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. I wanted to get those people first. Leadburg?
Here.
And Rainville?
Here.
Lass is Christina. Oh, there's there's Scott. So Isleton?
Here.
So Kristen Lass not here today?
Correct.
Okay. Goodwin?
Here.
Monks?
Here.
Hatil?
Not today.
I don't think she's coming tonight.
Okay. Uh, and all the rest, the FAA people not coming tonight, Ellen?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And the MBLC Bono bunker? No.
Not tonight.
Okay, so we're all set.
Okay, thank you. Share my screen. Hey, uh, first agenda item is approval of minutes from the September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, joint meeting. Hopefully folks have had a chance to review them. Uh, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept them as submitted.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? The second? Was that you, Caroline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. No, no changes. Roll call to approve the minutes.
Okay. Claremont not here. Dirks, I Fleckner?
I.
Roach?
I.
Ccore? Not here. Teal not here. Cook?
I.
Isleton? Um, where is Scott? I thought I said.
I.
Thank you. Karpinski?
Hi.
Mahana?
Hi.
Patton?
Hi.
Roberts?
Hi.
Zegowitz? Oh, is Jim's? Jim not verbal?
Just call him Nancy.
Nancy number two.
Right, there you go. All right. Uh, I understand I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero, one.
Okay, great. All right, um, next agenda item is the OPM report.
Okay, thank you. Just a brief design update. The, uh, couple things that the working group had previously agreed to, which was to, um, to, uh, increase our EUI, we decided to increase some attic insulation and some foundation insulation. It's not an aesthetic that's just run in it by you guys. And, uh, the other thing was to eliminate the operable windows in the building except for in the office spaces. That also had increased our EUI quite a bit as well. And also the idea to, um, the design team had considered it and they had decided to lower the curtain wall approximately six inches. Um, and that additionally increases the, uh, has a positive effect to the EUI. So those were some of the, um, design update. You know, some of the things that had been discussed and reviewed at the working group. So I think that was pretty much the highlights there that we had discussed last time. Um, the project budget I had sent out in advance and as well as the schedule, which I think at the end we'll review some future dates. So, um, I think that was pretty much it for the design update. I, I see you have the WSP proposal on there. I'll just say it though. At.
Do you want to wait till the end?
Okay. Yep.
It's up to you. It's up to you. We can get into it now or we can wait till?
Nope.
Well.
That's why, I mean, however you'd like to do it, I.
It's just, this is how it came up in the, uh, in the packet, so.
Um, I think we'll follow the agenda. So I don't have anything else.
All right, next is the library director report.
Yes, so, um, the responses to our RFP for, uh, an interim temporary location came back. We had two responses, one from five fifteen Groton Road and one from two twenty-two Littleton Road. Um, Groton Road has, um, about forty-five hundred, uh, square feet of storage plus eight thousand square feet for public use. Um, there's no storage at the Littleton site. Um, I do have, um, a form to assess the two sites and, uh, so that we can, um, do our due diligence with procurement. Um, Jean Roberts was willing to do this with me and if I could have a third person, I'll send out the two, uh, responses electronically and we can have a Zoom meeting to fill out our evaluations.
Um, I think somebody else
I think.
To do that.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, it wasn't me. I was furnishing.
Buffy, great, okay. If there's one other person, that would be wonderful. It's, it's just a two pager.
Ellen, I'll do that.
Oh, thank you, Nancy.
Um, Ellen, where was the, uh, what was the other address?
So two twenty-two Littleton Road is, uh, also the two-story, uh, brick unit across from the, um, the Tad McSprings housing development.
Oh, okay.
And, and the second floor was available, but, um, we wouldn't be able to house our collections there. So, um, so this is a fairly straightforward, um, you know, set of responses for us to read through.
Great. And five fifteen will have plenty of parking?
Um, about forty. Yes, about forty spots. So, uh, all of that is on the, um, all of that is, and more at night and on weekends. You know, more after four o'clock and on weekends.
Okay, great.
Tom, I did think of one thing I forgot. Sorry, it was on my screen tonight. Sorry, I apologize. It was, if I can share my screen quickly, there was a, as we know, last time we decided there would be a generator and the working group did review, I, um, location for the generator. And I just wanted to share that with everybody, um, just so everybody's aware where it was decided to go. There were two locations that were being considered, one here and one here, and this one that's in yellow was determined to be the preferred location. We can't see it. Oh, oh, you can't? I still have Tom's screen.
I'll stop sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can see the screen.
I can see it. No, I could, we could all see it.
Oh, I apologize. I'll, I'll just do it again, just to make sure to see if it pushes to everybody's screen. Well, that's weird. I couldn't see it. I could only see.
Okay. I couldn't see it either.
So there were, there were two locations considered, one here, uh, right by the driveway when you first come into the parking lot and the second location was here. This was roughly shown now that it's been agreed upon that it will be here. Landscape is going to focus on this a little bit with fencing and tree, you know, it's just the general location was decided. So don't, um, be it's not fully designed, I guess is my point. Buffy?
I have a question. Do we have to vote here as well? Well, we voted on these items. The working group. Now do we need to vote them officially in, uh, this group?
This was just a generator location, so I don't believe so. That was just, I, uh, this was a decision the working group made and I'm just sharing it. There's no, it was a sort of a, you know, um, a decision made that there's no necessarily the decision was already made to go with the generator and this was reviewing the locations.
Okay, I was also talking about the update on the design that are those items have to be?
Those items are on, on the, um, are on the list of things to be reviewed. So we'll be getting there.
Okay.
Buffy, we'll vote under five and I apologize because I didn't put votes in cap there in the right-hand column.
Right.
All the additional services and cost changes are listed in the matrix under five and when we get there, we'll find out if that's helpful to people or if that um, needs to be revised even more in a way that's efficient and effective for the group.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess I'm, all right, Ellen, you're, Ellen, you're done with your report?
Yes, I'm, I'm done with my report. I'm busy working on, um, how we're going to move the library.
So what is your estimated, what's your estimated, uh, timeframe for award on the, or make it a recommendation? I'm assuming this goes to the select board?
Yes, um, uh, the, we have, we have to, um, respond with the analysis of the two, uh, submittals. And then there actually has to be a lease negotiation. So you know, there's a, a lease form as well. So I assume maybe Mike Edwards or someone in the town manager's office will be helping with that. So that will be the next step after we analyze the submittals.
Was the evaluation cri- criteria included in the RFQ?
Yes, yes, it's very, it was very in-depth and, and the form.
Oh, I'm sure it is. I would never doubt you, Ellen.
But, and, and the form to rate it is, is cut and pasted exactly out of the RFP. So, you know, we'll just be able to go, yes, 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 no, no, missing, yes, yes, yes.
Perfect.
Just out of curiosity, who owns the property at two twenty-two Littleton Road?
I think the, the Palmer's and maybe.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like Titan. So that's Titus and Danny. Titan.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Who owns the property on Groton Road?
Um, Landtech. Chris Lorraine and family.
Yes, it's Lorraine Family Trust or something.
Great, all right. All right, um, so we will move forward then. I'll please share my screen. If you guys a second. All right, so we are under, um, number four, approval warrants invoices change orders. Proposals, so in your packet, um, we have, uh, several proposals. Some went to, uh, Alicia at CHA, some were provided through Feingold Alexander. So the first one is from WSP. Um, so this would be the commissioning, building enclosure, commissioning services proposed. So Alicia, you want to give us a little quick, uh?
May I suggest, Tom, maybe if we go back up and look at the agenda, I think if, if the group just votes on the matrix that shows all the add items that have been recommended, then you would be accepting the proposals and the budget change all in one vote.
Okay, but can we just get a quick summary from, from the, uh, the proposals?
Yeah.
If we go from the top to the bottom, if you want, if you said, oh, the proposal on the matrix there, it's on there that there's the, um, construction cost alternates that were on there. What was recommended is alternates at the cost estimate time. Those were, uh, reviewed and recommended by the, uh, working group. They're the, um, they're listed on there. The construction, um, EUI improvements that I, um, also discussed that were viewed and, and approved and recommended by the working group with to increase insulation, eliminate the operable windows and reduce the height of the curtain wall. And then there are three, um, additional service of contract amendments, however you'd like to refer to them, uh, for Feingold Alexander. One is for the, um, permit for the wastewater treatment. This is, um, the wastewater treatment needs to apply to the DEP for, um, it's called the WP, whatever. It's a specific permit we need to apply to, to start the process to try and review the capacity and things like that. So our civil engineer is a filling out that permit and that's an additional service to them. Uh, furnishing consultant was a consultant that is, it's always been shown on the budget. Ellen and I have always just sort of held it on there just to make sure that it would, you know, the budget would allow it. Uh, they're going to help to identify the, um, furniture for, and specify the furniture for the project and as well as the generator design, uh, by the electrical engineer. Those are amendments to Feingold's contract that were viewed with the working group and are recommended for approval. And the last two, which are, would come at, um, are also the, I know there were concerns about, we looked into having additional envelope commissioning. We went back to WSP who was, uh, selected to be our general building commissioner. We asked them for, uh, um, scope, you know, for recommended scope for envelope commissioning and they, you know, for a, um, you know, not a, a fully extensive, but a, you know, a moderate envelope commissioning and we reviewed that with them and they submitted a proposal for twenty-eight thousand five hundred. And well, uh, at the last working group, sorry, the last meeting here, there was a question about radon testing. We discussed it as a working group. That night I was able to get a proposal from, um, UEC who's also doing our hazardous material testing, that same company. He's able to do radon testing for, um, six hundred dollars and the I double checked with the library can be occupied when that happens. They just doesn't want any doors or windows open. So those are all the items that are in your packet. And all, all that changes on there. So all of those adding costs and tiny credits come to a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars with, and the furnishing consultant was already shown on the budget, a hundred and six thousand two hundred dollars for a budget impact of a hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars. So that leaves our contingency um, at one point nine million and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay. Um, I had just two questions. So, um, envelope commissioning, so that's going to be, they're going to contract directly with the town or they're going? Okay.
Yes, it would be, uh, I guess in the, you know, an additional, their proposal was already signed and we can, I'll have, I, the, um, the scope would be added to their proposal or we can have a second proposal, however you all would like to see it happen.
Okay. And then did you say on the permit for the wastewater achievement that Horsley Witten is your, already the, the civil?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because, um, I know the town, at least the water apartments, used a different firm in the past for all the permitting of the achievement facilities. That's why I was curious if they had been, if they had been, anybody had reached out to them or not, but.
I think in the, Ellen?
Um, yes, so, so we've been working closely with, um, the, um, water superintendent and, um, with Kristen. And this is going to have to be a conditional, uh, permit as, um, the town continues to analyze and investigate some of the inflow and infiltration issues that, um, have been plaguing the wastewater treatment plant. So, um, there are two parallel things happening here and one is a conditional permit, um, for this project with the understanding that the town is continuing, um, to check on, um, issues that at times cause the, uh, inflow to spike, especially during heavy rainfall.
Nancy?
What happens if it comes back that there is not sufficient load capacity at the town sewerage? Where are we at then?
Well.
Have to go in and reduce, reduce the, uh, the II that's occurring. That's my, that's just, that's what, that's one possible, you know, I'll, I'll come, but go ahead, Ellen.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to interrupt. We, we know that we can't reduce, um, you know, restrooms and the, uh, waterworks under the new plumbing code and, um, the the quantity of flow is different. The, the daily average flow, um, is acceptable. It's the occasional spike in flows, um, or when the highest flow is looked at over a twelve-month period. So some of this is, um, an assessment issue of how flow is counted. So, um, you know, I think going forward there were some issues beyond our adding, you know, already, of course, the library is making up some of the, the flow into the wastewater treatment plant. So but no, it is a serious issue, Nancy. There's no doubt about it.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Got any, uh, questions or comments?
I will highlight it because, um, uh, Ellen's highlight up to the second page that the construction estimate that was done did include the cost of the generator, a full generator that was included in there. And that's why the cost of the generator is not being presented here because it was already assumed in the construction in the latest, in the most recent estimate.
Okay, so that ba- budget, that contingency budget balance has already accommodated or accounted for for the generator cost. Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I just have a quick question on the, uh, envelope commissioning. So in the WSP proposal, um, in the construction phase kickoff meeting, it mentions that scope to be discussed for testing is below-grade waterproofing, air and vapor barriers, cladding, fenestration and roofing, which are five different, um, items. But the submittal review says that they've only included four submittal reviews, um, in their proposal and each one will be an additional five hundred dollars. So I'm just looking for clarification on how many submittals are we confident for is the correct number that they, that we think they'll need to review for the envelope commissioning?
Yes. I think we, we were trying to find, we will be strategic on those four. Those were the four they recommended and as we get through the process, it's a total of four. But those are the four that they felt, we asked them, which in their opinion were the most critical and that is what they recommended in terms of the ones, the submittals to review.
Makes sense. Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. It's just, I think it's the way they wrote the proposal. It looked like they listed five items, but only four submittals. So I just wanted to make sure. So. And then, uh, a question, Tom, to what you just said, um, we said that the generator, the budget for construction was included in the budget for the project. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct. The most recent update that we, that we saw.
Okay, and they knew the sizing, even though the, the design, we have that resolved in their budget?
Yes. They had, they had estimate, yes, they had an estimated size for the generator. So they have a the estimate.
That size.
Initial.
Yeah.
But that initial estimate for the size of the generator is what's included in the DD as we obviously get through the, at the next estimate at mid CDs and again at the end it'll be most definite, but you know, they made assumptions for the DB.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. Just wanted to get some clarifications. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Okay, so, um, suggestion was that we could do this all in one vote. So um, we are are we just going to vote then on the add-in costs for the wastewater, for the Feingold amendments and the two town, uh, the two Feingold amendments? So we never approved the furnishings consultant, even though that's been budgeted?
Correct.
Before?
I would vote on the entire matrix. Vote on add-ins and additional costs in the amount of a one hundred and eighty-one, three, four, six.
Okay, does somebody want to try to make that motion?
Um, I would try. Let me see. I make a motion to accept the additional, um, total budget impact of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars as presented. Uh, am I missing something?
No, I think that's right. I'll second that. You're on.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? And Mike, just, just, I should show everybody just before you vote. So here was the, uh, um, updated budget. Uh, where was that generator?
Generators and the construction line item. So that's, it's total construction cost. It's buried in there because it was part of the DD.
Okay.
In the DD estimate.
Right, right. Includes generator costs. Okay, thank you. Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. There's no further discussion. So roll call to accept the, uh, total additional budget impact of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars for both construction costs and, uh, professional services or additional services uh, for Feingold and for the town direct costs. All right, roll call, Buffy, please.
Yep, Claremont?
Um, since I didn't hear it from the beginning, I'm going to abstain on this one and I'll vote going forward.
Dirks, I Fleckner?
Hi.
Uh, Roach?
Hi.
Ccore not here. Teal not here. Cook?
I.
Isleton?
Bye.
Karpinski?
Hi.
Nana?
Hi.
Patton?
Hi.
Roberts?
I.
Zegowitz?
Yes.
So we have, uh, nine, zero, one.
Okay, great, thank you. So, uh, I think the only other thing that was, uh, to was to, just to go over briefly with schedule. So any schedule impacts that we need to discuss, Alicia or Ellen? I know last, at last meeting, you know, Feingold was, they were very anxious to get authorization on the generator. So they wouldn't continue.
They're going, the ups, the updates are, they are planning to next, uh, the October seventh, the project will be going in front of planning board. And, uh, two days later, well, the project will be going in front of conservation commission. Both of those date, which is delightful moving forward, but those dates both conflict with the next scheduled joint committee meeting and, um, working group meeting. So I, we were looking to try and reschedule the next, um, joint committee meeting, potentially September thirtieth. And then the, I'm not sure, the working group meeting, maybe the, uh, right after, but that's you know, planning boarding, conservation commissioner kind of trumpet at this point.
Um, if, if you could roll back up to the second page of the agenda, those dates are listed there and it would be good to know, um, you know, who, whom of each board could attend these two in-person meetings. So the thirtieth would be a joint meeting in lieu of October seventh. And October seventh would be the planning board at town hall. October ninth would be the conservation commission at town hall.
Do you need representatives from this joint?
I think it would be nice to have at least one or two board members at each meeting if we can get that in person. Otherwise, it's just going to be me and the consultant.
I can, uh, volunteer to do both, uh, planning board and conservation commission if you wish.
Is that Chris?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Chris. Buffy, you have a question?
No, I, that was my vote that I can too.
Oh.
Thank you, Buffy.
Well, the Mary.
I may. I may attend the planning board, but I can't attend.
Okay.
Um, conservation.
So, um, may I ask the budget document, um, the collapsed budget document that you showed most recently, Tom, with the blue, we thought going forward, we would show, right now it says approval nine sixteen. So we would be So we would be revising this to say now approved on nine sixteen. And each time there's an add in, we would put in the comments column. That there had been an action and the date, so we can keep track of that and this can be expanded and collapsed. And I guess my other question is whether the vote matrix is helpful as something to insert in the agenda. And then Buffy, I can send it to you for the minutes. Um, you know, if it's a helpful way of looking at what the library working group has recommended. And what needs action and what is an add in and what isn't, we can make, of course, revisions to both of these.
I think it would, I think it would be helpful, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Do we anticipate? Several more amendments before we're complete with the design?
No, we're. We're really good at this point. We'll see what comes out of the internal review meetings.
Okay. Alright. Think everybody's good with this then, and that approach, good suggestion. Okay. Alright, so um. Did anybody have any other old business to bring up? Any new business? I have one item, but anybody have uh, anything else? For new business? Um. So I sat, I, I sat in on the uh, that public here, public meeting the other night, uh, last week. On the um, specialized energy code. Um, that the town or the clean energy committee is um, supporting or recommending that the town adopt. Um. I was multitasking while I was trying to listen into the meeting, but Sue Thomas did get up and ask at one point um, to the panel. As far as. You know, what, you know, what, what is the impact for the town, you know, town adopts this at special town meeting and she specifically mentioned the library project? And um, I didn't, I didn't get the sense that we got a very clear answer um, from the panel. And my quick review of, of the code, my interpretation is that it, this project is not gonna be impacted by it. Mostly because of schedule, but um, Alicia or, well, and, and just the code itself. You know, I know there's these different thresholds for additions and alteration, uh, additions and modifications. But do either one of you have a sense of if that uh, if that code is adopted, if that will have any impact on this project?
I will confirm with the engineers and I will email back to you, I don't want to misspeak. I know it's been rattling around in their heads, but um, I will, I don't want to speak, so I'll get you that answer emailed to you.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the permit town building committee has been asked to give a recommendation also to, for the Sep- September seventh, twenty fourth. Select board meeting, we, we're tentatively scheduling to meet on the twenty third. Um, and um. The clean edge, actually, I was gonna reach out to Mike Belinsky, the, the chair of the committee, um, to attend our meeting, but he beat me to the punch. So he actually reached out, reached out to us, so we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll have them attend our meeting, I asked them to attend and. Provide clarification, um, not only for impacts, potential impacts on this project, but any other municipal projects that we may be involved in going forward. My sense is that this is mostly a, impacts mostly residential and commercial type development, but um. Just, we just wanna make sure that uh, we have all our bases covered, Gene?
Um, yeah, I, I, thank you, I, I also sat in on that Zoom meeting and was multitasking, eat, eating dinner while listening. Um, and I thought Sue Thomas said. That, well, first of all, the, the, the information, at least for residential, is that historic buildings don't fall under this. Code, it sounded like. Because our, because the town, the library is historic, it may not need to be upgraded to the same extent. And then the second thing was, I thought when Sue Thomas stood up. Uh, she said that it won't impact this project because we are, on this project, we're doing so much already. That it's an all electric building.
Yes, she did mention that, right?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I don't know, you know, I don't know.
I will send the engineers and, and email you out an answer.
Okay, thank you. Jim, I saw you had your hand up and you took it down, are you all set?
Yeah, I think I'm all set, I mean, I, I don't know how the building wouldn't be impacted, but I think that last point was that. Uh, pretty valid, that it's, it's being designed to such a high standard that it, it, it may not be uh, further impacted. But I, I think that code impacts every building. Given the, given the size of the addition, I, I wouldn't imagine that the uh, the historic exemption would, would get us out of that. But that is just my opinion, I'm wrestling with this thing every damn day and it's killing me.
Any sense on why the, and I guess this is to Jim or to anybody, but um. Why the need to get this on special town meeting?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to pass the Ellen Hardy test.
When, when is that, Tom?
It's October, October.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, yeah.
So, I mean, my, my assumption would be if they're gonna get it done then, it would be enacted January first.
Uh, no, I think, no, there were gonna be later than that.
It was like next summer or something.
I thought, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was like Ju- July or August would be when it would be effective.
January, July.
Actually, wasn't it end of August?
Well, it's gotta go to the attorney general when it, after town meeting, it would have to go to be approved and that, that's up to ninety days.
Scott, Scott, I, I can't see Scott, is he still on? Can, Scott? Do you have any, not to put you on the spot here, Scott, but put your other hat on if you could for a second and.
I, I, I also don't know the answer.
Okay. Yeah, well, hopefully I can, we can get some, some uh, that are, at our, at our building committee meeting next, next week. Um, hopefully we can get some clarification on that.
Yeah, I'm looking at all the inactive dates, Tom.
Yep.
And there, it's either January or July.
Plug in, take your position.
Everyone that I've seen that, that has adopted it so far, it's either. Jan one or July one.
Yeah, I thought I heard that it would be adopted over the summer and if our project is going out for construction. In April, then, you know, totally will miss it.
Yeah, and, and make sure, like, you know. If you don't have a building permit. If you don't have a building permit, um, by, by what, you know, by the deadline, does, how does that impact? Um. Does that impact the project, like, what's, what's the criteria for, you know, not this being exempt from this change?
As long as you're in for, as long as you're applied for permit, you're good.
It just feels like we're rushing this to pass and we don't have all the answers we need.
Uh, Mike, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I think Jim just said it, but I was gonna say the plumbing code went through a major code update um, recently. And if, as long as your uh, project was, the permit was issued prior to the code update, you, you did not have to maintain that updated code. If your permit's issued after the date is adopted, then you would have had to um. Work toward that updated code, and then I did have a separate question, Tom, when the discussion's done about the uh, energy code updates.
I think uh, in my experience, it's, it, cuz I got whacked with it on one, this. This past uh, in July, as long as you're in for permit, as long as that application has been made and it can be made. Or uh, you know, for demo or whatever, as long as there's some kind of application in there to get the, the project rolling. Uh, cuz, cuz the, the uh, ISD is, is, it can take, you know, long, long, long time uh, reviewing the, the plans. So, so as long as you're for app, as long as, as long as you're applied for permit, you, we should be okay. Sounds like there, sounds like we're gonna be fine anyways, application will be made in April or May or June, gives us a pretty big window.
Okay.
If we do get that good, which I, I will raise my hand again and say, let's not. There, there's my, there's my standpoint.
Okay, thank you, Nancy, I mean, Jim.
Other Nancy.
Other, other Nancy, alright, um, Mike, is that a question for this group or is it a question for our?
So that's something that was discussed, so when we were talking about the wastewater, someone mentioned about the bathroom fixtures and the total fixture counts that we had. Does anyone know that number of the total number of bathrooms we have in the library currently?
We, we do know, Mike, but it is under the new plumbing code.
Okay.
It, it is, we, we knew that the new plumbing code was enacted in January and it.
Okay.
Um, I wish I could remember if it was eleven or fourteen, but at any rate, we need the plumbing code and we can't back away from those numbers. We.
Got it.
Okay.
Uh, just something to consider, um, the, the plumbing board does. Um, allow variances, um, if you can prove a hardship. So if you were to potentially prove that your facility itself couldn't withstand the load of additional bathrooms. There is a path, you could apply for a variance to the state and request a variance to not put in additional bathrooms if it creates a demand that our town can't provide. So just something to consider in the back of, if we get into a major issue as we go through these wastewater treatments, that we can look at that option.
That's welcome news, any alternative is a good, good.
Variances aren't usually great at getting approved in the history I've been experienced with them, but if you can prove a hardship, then the, you can have good success.
Well, I personally just, this, everybody knows, was recently in front of this board uh. On a couple of projects, not quite a library project, uh, for variances from the new plumbing code for bathrooms. Um, not only was my projects all denied, but pretty much every single other project similar that were in front of that board. So the variance, just, you know, hopefully we never have to go that route, but that is not guaranteed. They're not a very.
I completely agree, it's not guaranteed, but it is a path.
But no, you're right, it is, it is a path, it's an option, um. But proven a hardship and in my case, we thought we had a very, very well documented hardship and, and uh. Were unsuccessful both times. Okay, um, any other discussion regarding the uh, uh, any other new business items? No, okay, so we have upcoming dates, so Ellen is requesting that the, this joint board meet on September thirtieth in lieu of October seventh. Um, anybody have any? Issues?
Yeah, I, I won't, I can't do the thirtieth, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, anybody, uh, is that okay with the trustees then, I'm assuming?
Yes, the, the trustees were gonna meet that night anyway, so we'll, we'll stay on after this meeting.
Okay, alright, great, and looks like we got a couple volunteers to assist with the planning board and cons comm meeting, so great. Okay, if we don't have any further business, um. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Don't say that, it's so exciting, you know, you know. Nancy and other Nancy, alright, so that was motion by Nancy, seconded by other Nancy.
That was not other Nancy.
Oh, no, that's right, no, last week he was other Nancy. Sorry, Buffy, I'm getting.
Alright, stop.
Alright, roll call, please.
Wait, it was seconded by Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, I thought so, alright, here we go, Clairemont?
Right, I.
Okay, thank you, Derek's eye Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
C four not here, teal. Is Glenn here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Glenn, when did you get here?
Uh, ten minutes ago.
Okay. So C core?
Yes, hi.
Okay, teal not here, Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Herpinski.
I think Buffy is our homeroom teacher, she's really good at.
Will you just respond, these guys have to get to their meeting.
I can do it alphabetically here, Mahanna.
Hi.
Adam.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Zegowitz.
Hi.
And Wimberg is here but not a voter. So we have one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, zero, zero.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
Joint points are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Okay, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.